Study session for October the 22nd. Again, I note that all of our council is present. First item on our agenda is to hear a presentation and provide direction on the process for the sale of 13 acres of undeveloped city-owned property located along the north side of the alignment of Thomas Road just west of the Loop 202 freeway. I believe Ms. Falbeck, our real estate director, is present for this presentation. Is that right, Mr. Brady?
That's correct, Mayor.
Kim, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning. Good morning, Mayor and Council. Kim Falbeck, Mesa's Real Estate Services Administrator. I'm here this morning to give a presentation and state direction on the proposed sale of a city-owned undeveloped property. Earlier this year, I was here and reviewed some sale practices that Mesa uses to sell property. One method is real estate broker. We use this practice to sell our Pinellas County farmland. Public auction, we did that for Thomas and Recker. We held a live auction. Sale/bid process, we have not used this process for some time. And then request for proposals, we did that at the Riverview property at northwest Mesa. This is a 13-acre city-owned parcel. It's located north of Thomas and west of Red Mountain Freeway. It currently has citrus groves on it. In 1989, the city purchased this property. It was 32.59 acres for a potential water reclamation plant. When the 202 Red Mountain Freeway was planned, ADOT purchased 19.19 acres from the city for the expansion of the Red Mountain Freeway. Some of the development requirements that will be for this property, it is currently zoned RS 43, which is one lot, one-acre lots. It will retain land. We do have some, a future well site that we do need, so we will accept out 0.74 acres for that. That will be at the northeast corner of the property. Some of the other development requirements will be a waterline extension to the west and then connect into Virginia. And this property does not currently have sewer and therefore septic systems will be allowed for 10-plus homes. A future developer would have to provide street access to the site. And also, on the northern end, there's a small portion that lies within the flood control, flood plain, and they would have to seek clearance from the flood control district. The successful bidder would work with the city on the existing city-owned monitoring wells. One of them can be removed, but the southern one on the site would have to remain. And then the developer would have to comply with all city development codes, regulation, guidelines, and standards. The proposed practice that we recommend to sell this property is the sale/bid process. There would be a minimum bid amount. It would be the appraised amount of $950,000. We would advertise the sale/bid, and we would have to post the property. We would advertise in the newspaper, mail letters out to, as well as reach out to the development community. We have established a number of contacts for brokers and real estate developers in the community. And recently, for another parcel, we've reached out to them and heard quite a bit of information from the development community and brokers of what is popular right now to develop in the minimum acreage to do that for infill-type developments. And then, once we had the sale bids, we would hold a virtual meeting to have a sale/bid opening. With that, Mayor and Council, I welcome any questions and discuss and receive direction from you how to move forward with this sale.
Thank you, Kim. Council, I suspect Mr. Freeman has something to say about this, just because I know, Mr. Freeman, this is your district. You've probably cultivated something on or near this piece of property. Let me think, what do you have to add to that?
Well, Mayor, thanks. You read my mind. I do have several questions. Kim, is, do the brokers prefer a sale/bid versus a live auction-type bidding process? And what's the preference out there in the community?
You know, I have not heard, have not asked them that question, but I think any opportunity to put in a number on a piece of property to purchase it, maybe if there was competitive bidders, they would like more of an auction-type where they knew there wasn't just a one-time dollar amount that they could offer in a sale/bid practice. But if there's just a couple of interests, you know, maybe the sale/bid process could be a method to work. It just depends on how much interest is in on the property and the competitiveness for it.
And Mayor and Council, let me just, I think that's a very important point in why we kind of went down this path. We've had, we haven't had a lot of interest on this property, but we have had some, so from a variety of people, we have not, a number of people have not been interested, but we've had individuals who are very interested in this property and are acquiring property in this, actively acquiring property in this area. So at the same time, this is a unique property, is kind of a remnant piece. It doesn't have, bringing, sorry, bringing sewer to this property is really just not feasible for residential development. Keeping this as a low-density development is important. The waterline, as you can tell, is some distance away, providing all the street improvements. So there's, this is a piece of property that's going to require significant investment for the limitation for the number of homes that can go on it. So there's probably a limited number of individuals who are looking for 13 acres with all of these conditions on it. But we wanted to make sure it's publicly transparent in the processes so that anyone could provide the bidding. We don't think we need a broker to go out and advertise and seek others to know about this property. We think it's widely known. So we don't see the need for us to incur that expense. Neither do we see the, enough interest to justify the additional expense if we were to do a auction process. We would be concerned that there would be very few interested parties showing up and that therefore we would be spending a lot of money on that front end. So again, we're suggesting the seal/bid process. We do have active, very active interest on this property, but we also want to make sure, in working with Vice Mayor Freeman and our Environmental Services Department, we wanted to make sure also it was clearly understood at the front end of this process what the conditions were and what we would allow on this property. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. I'll finish, but you know, thank you to staff and working and getting this parcel up for purchase. I appreciate that. You know, the orchard there is probably 80 years old and it's, there's not viable fruit there, so it's time for it to go into other hands and ownership and get back into tax rolls. You know, I really like the parcel zoned R43 because that provides a continuity for the existing neighborhoods in the area, and it's a framework. And this parcel is unique because it has unprecedented views of the mountains, the river. If you like wildlife and horses and cattle, they're there. It'll be out in your backyard. They might even be in your, in your backyard, you know, if you leave the gate open. So the other part is the well site. I think well sites are imperative important to the health of our city. Water is obviously, as we all know, a very critical asset, and keeping those well sites and that infrastructure is very important. So it's kind of a unique area. I know putting in a well site in the future and connecting it into some type of water supply or working with SRP to trade water might happen in the future. But the, you know, that's a well-known aquifer out there, so with a great water supply, that will be probably there forever. With that, I just support the project. I, again, the neighborhoods that I represent are excited about this being sold and keeping it R43 for future development. So thank you. Mr. Luna, I'll defer to you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Freeman. Thank you, Mayor. I, you know, I was going to ask about the orchards, and it looks like they've extended their lifespan, so there's no need for that. And this is probably a good area that I would recommend that we go ahead and auction, I think, or go through that process, the seal/bid process. So I'm going to be supportive on the sale of this property. I'm excited to see what happens. And as again, Vice Mayor Freeman indicated, that the neighborhood in and around that area is supportive, and if he's supportive, I'm going to support him in this, in the sale of this property. So, so good luck, and I hope we make a lot of money.
Thank you.
I'd just like to echo what Mr. Freeman and Mr. Luna said. This is a great place for residential development. You know, we've seen the real popularity of the Holy High Crossing area and the proximity to freeways. You know, you can, it's a great quality of life, but you can also be anywhere in the valley, you know, be on the freeway very quickly. So I think this is a great place to support and encourage and take advantage of the great interest in residential development out there right now. And this is, I hope this isn't too far off the topic, but just generally on the topic, Mr. Brady of the well site. I understand that's an important asset and the significance of it right there in the riverbed and the access to the aquifer there. I'm just curious, typically when, and I live in that neighborhood as well, and we see well sites being, being put in by SRP, but they're adjacent to canals and, you know, the way to deliver that water is obvious. This seems like it's a little bit off the beaten path, and so are we just, how are we going to connect that water to some sort of supply?
It's a great question, and we just happen to have our water resources staff here today, so I'll have, let Chris Hazard explain that.
Mayor, Council, that's a, that's a good question. So the well that we're proposing won't actually be hydrolically connected to the new neighborhood or anything north and west of the 202. So that's, it's a big producer. We'd expect that well to produce over 4 MGD, so that would overwhelm that area. So the idea would be to push that water, once we develop that well, through an existing casing under the 202, and then east, southeast, probably a mile or two, and connect into another transmission main.
Okay, so that's, those are pipes that are yet to be drenched and installed, or is there some, some infrastructure there that I'm not aware of?
Mayor, I think the casing is already existing under the 202.
Right, correct. The casing is already there. It was built, when the 202 was built, in anticipation of future utilities. So the casing is good. There's already a 12-inch pipe that was installed with that casing, but because of the age, we've seen that before. The gas gets, they tend to dry out. That would have to be tested. It's not reliable, possibly in our opinion, but if that's years down the road, we probably wouldn't install this well for, well, we're not sure exactly when we'd install the well, but it would be in the future.
So Mayor, the original acquisition of this property goes clear back to, I think, Mr. Lester, and I believe it was intended to be a, what was it, Kim?
Water reclamation.
A water reclamation project. And so it was intended to be a significant source of water for the city. But then with the coming of the 202, I think that changed the plans for that site. But as Mr. Freeman pointed out, this is a significant aquifer, and so we just wanted to retain the ability at the, at some point in the future to dip our straw in there and pump it over and make it available for the rest of the city.
Great, yeah, I'm sorry, that was a little off the topic, but it's an interesting, it's good to have another little primer on, on water. Council, we do have the need to, for, to entertain a motion to provide direction on this. Is there any additional questions before we do that?
We have direction, is that, if we can just get general direction, I think we're good.
We'll bring a resolution.
And then we'll bring a resolution back for Council, formal Council action.
All right, so a motion's not needed, but we do need consensus on whether we approve going forward. I'm seeing at least three or four thumbs. I'll add my thumb.
Okay.
There's, there we go. So yes, clearly the consensus is to go forward, and we're all hope for a good outcome from this sealed bid.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you, Kim. Next item on our agenda is to hear a presentation and provide direction on the utility rate recommendations. Mr. Brady, it looks like you've got several of your directors ready to talk on this?
Yes, Mayor, we will, apologies to the Audit and Finance Committee, but we're going to present to you a similar presentation that we spent a couple of meetings with them on, but we wanted to provide more background to the whole council on our forecast and our recommendations for utility rate increases, and so we are prepared to make that presentation today. We have a cast of characters here today, but we'll allow, we'll have Brian start off. Brian?
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council members, Brian Richel, Management and Budget Assistant Director. And today, as the city manager indicated, we'll go through, a few weeks ago, a couple months ago, we presented to the Audit and Finance Committee a presentation on the recommendation, rate recommendations. And then a couple, a few weeks ago, we came to council, I have a study session, and presented some of the forecast and those recommended rate adjustments. So today, we'll go and I will review those rate recommendations, but then I'll have the departments go into a little more detail of those recommendations. So just as a, as a refresher, the utility enterprise operations, each utility is operated as a separate business center. The reserve of the utility fund is used to smooth adjustments year-to-year, as you'll notice throughout the forecast, what we try to do. And the reserve balance can also phase in new programs or changes into any operations. As previously mentioned, we have some financial principles that we like to follow. These five are a balanced net sources and uses. 20% or higher reserve fund balance, this helps with rating agencies when we do go out for financing for utility bonds. Also, rate adjustments are predictable and smooth throughout the forecast. We try to keep them smooth so there's no rate spikes or any large increases that are needed. And then equity between residential and non-residential rates. What we look for is to, the equity between residential and non-residential rates to make sure that the, the rates are equitable between those two, and then also affordable utility services. We don't want to, we just take a look to see if it's affordable and if there's a balance between the rates for the customers, but then also be able to, for, have the revenue to operate the systems.
Excuse me, Brian, before you proceed, and I know you're going to, these principles are going to apply this going forward, and so if you don't mind, I just, at the, at the risk of interrupting, you know, your, your presentation, I have a couple of questions on these principles, because just because I know they're important and you're going to apply them, you know, to the rest of your discussion. I'm not sure what, what balanced net sources and uses means. Can you help me understand that? Does that mean we want to break even?
That's a great question, Mayor. And so yes, for balanced net sources and uses, what we are looking at is the revenue that is, that is brought in from those rates and the expenses that, for each utility, nets to zero. So we try to get as close to zero as possible, and sometimes we're a little below zero, sometimes we're a little above zero, but that is essentially what a balanced net sources and uses. So your sources is the income, the revenue coming in, and then the uses is your expenses going out to operate those operations.
But, but how does that fit into the Mesa model of generating revenue from our utilities? Don't we want to make money on, on our utilities?
We want to be able to get a, an appropriate return on investment. So basically, yes, you want to make some revenue to be able to run your operations and have some income, but it's, we're not like a private industry to where that is their main source of income, of operations is to create revenue for their stakeholders. Our stakeholders are the customers and the constituents, so with the government, with an enterprise fund, you try to bring a balanced net sources and uses.
Okay. So then, I'm sorry, the next question I have is the equity between residential and non-residential rates. To the point you just made, our customers are, are providing good service and providing low rates to our customers is important, so I get why we want to have low residential rates. And for non-residential rates, why, why is it important that they be, that we strive for equality there? Isn't, in the, in the non-residential commercial market, aren't we, we just need to be competitive with, with the other providers, don't we? I guess, help me understand, why do I, why should that be a priority for me that are, that we have equity between residential and non-residential rates, as long as I'm providing a competitive rate to the businesses?
That's a great question, Mayor. So why we look at equity between residential and non-residential? So when we, a few years ago, I think five or six years ago, we, we, the city implemented a tiered residential structure. And so with that, the first tier that we have for residential is at a certain dollar amount, and that tier is considered necessary for residents to, to live upon, basically. And then tier twos, three, and four are discretionary spending. So when it comes to, for instance, landscaping for commercial, and non-residential is landscaping. Currently, right now, the residential landscape is at a tier two, while commercial landscape, or the commercial rate actually, is at a tier one rate. So with that, with the landscaping is considered kind of discretionary spending, we want to be able to make it equitable to where the non-residential rates move closer up to that tier two, where it is with the residential for like landscaping, where it's a discretionary spending, but not a necessary spending to provide to, to our customers.
Mayor, I was trying to make sure that one category doesn't have to carry a larger portion of the burden of paying for capital costs or operating costs. So we try to figure out how to create that equity between the two, and right now, it's skewed towards that the residential side is picking up, when you look at the rate, when you look at the, the demand on the system, it appears that they are picking up a greater portion of the plant and equipment and operations of the utility, of the enterprise versus the commercial side. And so obviously, the residential side still represents the greatest, by far the greatest proportion of demand on the system, but we also recognize that the commercial side also needs to be proportionally sharing in their costs or their demand on paying for capital and operations. So one of the things that you'll see in the rate structure is a significant difference where the residential rates would be much, much lower than the non-residential, and that's in an effort to try to rebalance and bring the non-residential back into parity as far as how they are sharing and paying for the cost of that capital and operations.
Okay, so yeah, in that context, I get what you're saying, which is that we don't want to inappropriately weight the burden of extracting revenue from utilities on our residential customers. Quite frankly, I would argue the opposite is what we want to do. And so I guess that, that's the point I'm trying to make is, is I just think on, as we scrutinize how much is too much for, for utility rates, on the commercial side, the question is, are these rates competitive?
Yeah, well, so being a competitive rate versus what this is speaking to isn't really speaking about necessarily the competitive portion of the rate. It's more about within the rates within the city between residential and non-residential is looking at the equity between those. It's not necessarily looking externally. This, this principle really doesn't suggest anything about looking out as far as how we compare with other cities. It's really more about looking at the proportional costs of providing services to residential versus non-residential and making sure those rates have some level of consistency, that each is carrying their weight. And as Brian's saying, we kind of look at the landscaping as one component of that. And so that's how, that's what this is speaking to. It really doesn't speak to, it's the last one, Mayor, the final bullet is what you're speaking to, having to do with kind of the affordability of utilities. That's, that is a principle, but it's not necessarily in this particular bullet point, if that makes sense.
It, it does, and I know that we've got a lot of slides to go, and, and this is a theme that we're going to be talking about, I'm sure, throughout this presentation, so I won't belabor it, but thank you. I, thank you for helping to kind of set the definitions at the beginning of this. Unless there's other questions, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Freeman.
You know, Mayor, that's a good point. I just wanted to, the consternation is, I don't think we ever, when, when people say, well, the city Mesa has high water rates, where do we, how do we compare to other municipalities or cities? You know, what's, what's our threshold? And I don't know that I really get a really good answer, Mr. Brady. You know, we, we do what we need to do for our community and our city, but are we affordable compared to other municipalities? And does that really matter? I don't know, but you know, I get a lot of concern about our high water rates and, and even so. So I, I get it, but you know, I just don't know how to understand certain components of it. I get what we need to do as a utility to provide the most affordable service. And with that, I'll just conclude my remark.
Thank you. Please go ahead, Brian.
So Mayor and Council, as, so the first slide here is for planning purposes only, so when we do go through the process, we update all of the revenues, the sources and uses, and then we come down and, and see what can we, what can we do? If we had, for instance, this one is no rate adjustments. If we did zero rate adjustments throughout the forecast, how would the forecast take a look? And when we do that, we notice that in, in the last year, the fiscal year '25, '26, we draw down a significant amount of the fund balance, our reserves, and also we're at a negative net sources and uses of $38 million. So with that on the left, we put the, the five principles that we like to follow, and we only meet two out of the, or two out of the five of them. So smoothed adjustments, yep, zeros throughout, and then two for the solid waste. And then, is it affordable? Yes, it would be affordable for our customers, but then it would be, it would put a significant impact on the operations of the utility. So the next thing we would do is say, okay, what if we had balanced net sources and uses at the year five of our forecast, so fiscal year '25, '26? And with that, we do have a balanced net sources and uses. We're a little above zero, so we're at $3.3 million. But what would happen is we would need a little bit bigger rate adjustments. So as, for instance, residential water would be at 2.5% adjustments throughout the forecast, and then at the very end, maybe a 1.5. And then also with the residential solid waste, we'd be at two, and then wastewater would be at four. So this meets four out of the five. Is it, the only one that would not meet is affordable because we would have some significant rate adjustments throughout the forecast for our residences and our customers. So with that, we went down and said, okay, what if we did zeros for residential and see where we would go? So with that, we were able to put the zeros in for three years, so water residential, wastewater, and solid waste. All the residential was zero, but what would happen is that would draw down the reserves in three years. So in the third year, so the fourth year, fourth column, the third year of the forecast, we would have some significant rate adjustment, rate hikes to keep that fund balance percentage that we look at at almost 20%. And that is one of the, the principles that we would like to maintain. So, and in the future years, yes, we do get net sources and uses as, as positive, but what, what happens is that in those two years, '23, '24, and '24, '25, to sustain a 20%, it is significant rate hikes to bring that reserve back up. So with that, also, it's not a smoothed adjustment, so what we like to do is keep smooth adjustments throughout the forecast so we don't have to do these significant rate hikes that could put pressure on our customers.
Brian, I have a question for you.
Yes.
So the, the model that you're using, you know, to create this, this chart, I, I, does it, to what extent does it include future growth, you know, in, in our utility and does it, to what extent does it include future growth, you know, in, in our utility rate payer base?
That's
And, and here, and I, I know you've got a good answer, but here's, I think, the model that we have in Mesa where we rely on utility revenues, is dependent on us not having huge dark, you know, downtowns, and, and for, and continuing to attract large industrial utility users out in the southeast. And, and I'm very optimistic. I, I see lots of good news on both of those fronts. We've got, you know, Echo Mesa and all kinds, all kinds of new customers coming to downtown. Once ASU opens, I think we'll continue to see a lot more, you know, utility customers in, in West Mesa. Southeast Mesa, you know, we're, we're fighting off offers from, you know, Fortune five companies that want to come in and build billion-dollar buildings, and, and encourage us to increase our capacity of our water treatment plant, so that they can buy utilities from us. So, I, that's an enviable place to be. And so I just wonder if that gives me optimism that this model that we have of financing city government through, in, in part, the sale of utilities, is not perhaps as, as dumb an idea as, as some people might think it is. But the question is, we, we can easily be scared by looking at a graph like this and saying, well, yeah, if we hold the line on utility rates, three or four years from now, we're in trouble. And, and, but is that really true? Because if we continue to grow as well as we are right now, and I, I, not, certainly if, if there's a downturn in the economy and all this great growth that we're experiencing right now slows down or stops, all bets are off, you know, then, then that's a problem. But if it continues, it, aren't, isn't that really good news for us? And doesn't that give us the subsidy that we need to, to not go to the rate payers, perhaps as quickly as we, some might
Mayor, real quick, let me jump in. So, you talk about the subsidy. Remember, the council approved an ordinance that caps that dollar amount. So, there is not necess, I mean, it, it grows as a percentage of revenues, but, you know, even with all the new development, we're seeing in our, I mean, while at the same time we're selling some more water, the number or the amount of gallons per residential use is dropping off significantly. So, it, there is a balance in here. So, we're, you would think that, I heard the other day that Mesa's using less water than it did in 2009. And so, yes, we have a lot of growth, we have users, but the residential side per household is dropping off quite a bit. Yet, where the growth is and where the large developers are, that's new. And so we're having to build new lines, we're having, we're already under design for the next expansion of Signal Butte, just to keep up with that demand. Finding the additional water rights that we're going to need to provide water in Southeast Mesa continues to be, expensive water continues, it also impacts this. So, all those are put into the context of this. Now, the good news is, every year, we come to council and review these numbers. So, while we're showing you a five-year forecast, nobody's telling you that, we're asking council to approve the next five years of rates. We're just talking about the next year. And the next year is what we're really going to be asking the council to take action on. But we want you to understand is, when you make that decision in the context of a forecast, it does have ramifications added to the future. If we choose not to do rate increases, we can do that. It may mean, though, that if, in our conservative estimates, there may be, there'll be, there could be a need for a significant rate increase in the future, and, and some communities have chosen to do that. And so sometimes that's why it's hard to compare rates, because communities will defer and defer until a point where they need nine and 10% increases in a single year. We, in the conversations we had a lot of finances, everybody thought that probably was not the best approach, was to try to have very, almost inflationary rate increases at a very small percentage, and, and evaluate those each year, but keep those small, and, and maybe just adjust those slightly each year to try to keep up with the additional costs in the utility.
I think that's a great point, Mr. Brady. And let me, let me confluence city staff. For the, for the six years that I've been doing this, and, and we're on the horns of this dilemma, we get great conservative advice from city staff. And, and for the most part, we follow that. And, and that's put us in an enviable position. You know, kudos to, to our city management. We, we do have a, a nice fund balance here, and we have a nice fund balance on our general fund side as well. And so, so much so that for the last several years, we've said, you know, we're going to start spending that down, because it doesn't need to be quite that good. And, and we haven't been really good at spending it down, thankfully, because the economy's been great. You know, and, and sales tax and other things have always, you know, we've always had a very conservative model that, that thankfully has kind of, you know, underperformed in, in terms of helping us predict our ability to spend down our balance. So, I guess that, that goes back to my original question is, is it seems like this is a pretty complicated model that we need to apply here. All, all of the factors that you just talked about, Mr. Brady, you know, that make this a complicated process to predict, you know, our, the, the future of our utility, the demand on our utilities, I'm just curious to know if all of those factors are, are included in this model that we're using to, to come up with these numbers.
Mayor, if I were to tell you we think we have every variable covered, I wouldn't be telling, it wouldn't be accurate, but I will tell you, we have a very talented staff, and the spreadsheets that are behind these numbers are pretty sophisticated. They use a lot of outside resources also to help them in, looking at forecast of economies going out into the future. But again, we give you a forecast, if you go to slide seven, this is kind of the in-between version of where we think we are. And all we're saying is, looking out into the future, this is our best, what we, what our crystal ball tells us today, based on what we're assuming for growth, and based on growth annually each year, what do you have in here, 2%?
Around there.
Around 2% growth each year. Now, it could be more in one year, but it may be less in another year. So, remember, we're looking at this over five years, six years, sorry, and trying to make decisions today and seeing what the impact is that they have at the end of five to six years. That's how we look at the enterprise fund. So, again, each, each year, we'll come back to council and we'll have this discussion. And I can assure you, numbers will change slightly, we hope not dramatically. But you can see, even on slide seven, again, we've tried that principle of trying to keep affordable, but keep it, the rates low at one and a half percent for residential on the water, and three and a half percent on the wastewater side. We're really trying to keep those rates low and can, and, and over a long period of time. But each year, we can, we can come back to council, and, and abiding by these principles, we can make adjustments up or down from there. But we're trying not to, in any one year, make big changes up or down. That's, that's what our, some of our goals are.
Got it. And I, again, I, I'm, I'm trying to pay a compliment to staff for, for the good, good conservative advice that you have offered and that you are offering now, but I think, did you say a moment ago that, that this model is, is based on a 2% growth expectation?
Yes, Mayor, it's roughly 2%. As the city manager mentioned, it can go up or down, but we usually have about a 2% growth in here.
And even in the best of years, Mayor, remember, even with all the big growth you're seeing in Southeast Mesa, while it's significant, in the overall total water pumped, it's still a very small fraction.
Yes. Yeah. Okay, thank you. Frankie?
Yeah, no, a question on, a comment previously, and something that I've asked over the last couple of years around commercial versus residential, especially on the water rates. Is there, is there a model, formula of when we can say that commercial will be kind of up to par to what we've, what we've had on residential? You know, comment earlier was that residential has been paying a little bit more of the fair share than commercial in, in previous years. So, is there, is there any thought on when will we be balanced on, on those ends? Or is it, is it not about, a question of balance, but just getting to, as we grow, getting to a certain percentage of what commercial has to pay for the, the improvements and the new lines that are coming in?
Thank you, Councilman Heredia, and, and Mayor and Council. Let's go to slide 11, right, Brian? Would that, could we start there to help answer the question for the council member?
Yep.
I think that visual helps, and then you can kind of show him how you're trying to make those next two slides. Who wants to cover that? Oh, sorry, go ahead.
I, I'd like to cover that.
Please.
City Manager. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, Eric Hansen, Water Resources. This is a slide that we use, and hopefully you can see it in front of you. It does a great job of showing, you know, why the department needs to maintain capacity within its system. Even though, you can see it's bookend on the x-axis here, January to December, you can see that usage there in June, July, that purple, that yellow, those blue tiers.
Yes.
Those are our, our customers, or those are the usage that is beyond what we would consider like our typical user at about seven, six K gals. And so, the city needs to maintain capacity within the system to still maintain a service to those customers. And so that's why we've created and implemented these, these tiers, and then assigned rates to those tiers, those different levels, to reflect how much it costs to maintain that capacity within that, within that system. So, you know, it, it, it gets to, you know, equitable cost recovery within the system, and making sure that, you know, we're not charging someone on a fixed income to, you maintain capacity for in the summer when someone wants to use, you know, 100,000 K gals in the month.
So, also, Mayor and Council, to add on to that, Councilmember Heredia, the, for your equitable, yes, we do, we take this into consideration, the, the impact on the system. So, with this, it shows that in order to provide water at those peak times and those peak months, we have to have a system to be able to do that. And so, that's why the, at the higher, at the, the higher tiers, there's higher rates for, to be able to, for that system. But also, to get back to, we do take a look at this with a bunch of, a few other factors in our forecast, to then look to see when is non-residential and residential, when is that equity? We take a look at those numbers on an annual basis, and sometimes on a quarterly basis. So, when we do come back to council with a forecast, we do keep that in mind on how far out in the forecast where that will be equitable.
It's a question on this graph, Mayor. Would you say, as far as the colors, would, on the graph, are we saying, like, the green is most of the residential, and anything above there is more the commercial aspect? I, I understand there's some heavy users on the residential side, but would, i- is that how it's broken down? But, or is it, is this some other data there that represents those colors?
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmember Heredia, that, that line there, that first tier, that threshold, that first tier, that's what we're delineating as that line between discretionary, or necessary and non-essential, or, or non-necessary discretionary use. So, we monitor where and how much that is, and we want to, we want to bring the, and you can see us slowly bringing the, the usage charge of our non-residential customers to that threshold of that, that first and second tier, and what we're charging for that second tier, again, for that discretionary water.
So, and, so this is really just focused on residential?
Yes.
So, it's not comparing, all of these rates are residential. Is there another slide? I think the council was really looking at the balance between residential and commercial. Is there another way we can show and explain that? We don't have a chart for that. Okay, so this chart really just fixes within the residential rate, how we establish tiers, right? So, we establish the very basic service charge tier at that green rate. So, it's kind of like the very life support water rate that, you know, you would need outside, you know, inside your home, I guess, is the way to look at it, inside your, the walls of your home.
Sure, okay.
Everything above that shows something, you know, more discretionary use of water. And so, of course, then we have tiers. Our tiers make that water more expensive as you go into those higher amounts of discretionary water. I'm trying to think where we could show you a balance of how we try to manage the, between the resident, or the, yeah, the residential and the commercial. Do we have, other than just how we explained it, I think that's probably the best way to do it, right? So, but, Councilman Heredia, is, help me, is, what's, is the question, I think the question you asked, though, about how we, we do evaluate that each year between residential and commercial, that's why you see the need to have these rates increases for commercial to be, as a percentage, higher than residential going out over every year. Is our effort to try to bring that back into some kind of equity based on their demand on the system for paying the cost of capital and operations?
Yeah, I, I think at the end of the day, my question is, is that equity question is, and that question around, you know, residential not paying, the, the, not paying the brunt of all the costs, how do we, how do we balance that to commercial as, as we've talked about, that commercial kind of, we're picking up in the future and ongoing, but in previous years, I, I think residential, though, I understand that it's a bulk of, of the city, but how do we balance those two is my question.
Yeah, and maybe we can come back with some other charts and, and to try to explain that other than just our words. So, give us a chance to come back and try to explain that a little bit better. But I, we, I hear you, and I think it's important for us to understand how we evaluate that inequity between residential and commercial, and what drives the rates and why they're, they're different. We can, will, give us another opportunity to come back with a better explanation.
So, with, with that, on slide seven, as the city manager indicated, the recommended rate adjustments for this year, for 2021, would be a one and a half percent increase on residential, and also with wastewater, it'd be a three and a half, zero for solid waste. And if you notice going out, it is, city manager Brady indicated also, is that it's one and a half all the way out, and that for, it's about roughly CPI right now, but also, it, we're able to lower that because also, with the previous discussion on demand on the system, we are, it is roughly 50/50 now with residential and non-residential on the demand on the system, so we are getting there. And so we do take a look at that when we do take a look at the rates on the demand and the rates itself. So, we also take a look at all, all the financial, or the principles on the left-hand side, and this does mark all of the boxes to where, if you go out to fiscal year 25, 26, we are near balanced at our net sources and uses at $1.6 million. We do maintain a 20% fund balance. We do have the smoothed rates throughout the year, so we, throughout the forecast, so there is no anticipation or any necessary rate hikes or rate spikes in any one year. And then also, it helps with moving towards the, as we've been talking about, the equity of residential and non-residential, and keeps the affordability of the, the rates for our customers, especially for the water residential with a one and a half percent. And with that, I will have, I'll start with, the water and wastewater department is here, and they will go into a little bit more detail of those rate adjustments.
Why don't we jump to slide, we've already talked about slide 11, let's go to slide 12? Just, and now we're going to focus on this
I'm sorry, before you get to slide 12, can, can we, we look at slide 11, just because I had a, a question on, on the increasing costs?
On 11?
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Page nine. Slide 11. I'm just curious to know, the, the increase in, in operating expenditures for water, an additional 15.2 million, I'm, I'm, I have a guess that that's because the commodity cost is, is going up, our, our CAP cost, and, you know, just like the cost of acquiring the water is going up, and, and then I, I, I'm going to let you answer that question, but also, why the increase in the operating expenditures of wastewater? Is that because chemicals are going up, or, can you just comment on, on why those two things are going up?
Yes. Good morning, Mayor. Councilmembers, you have pretty much covered everything I was prepared to discuss, but, yes, we are, we continue to be challenged with the Central Arizona Project, especially when drought is in the conversation. But every year, we're faced with an increase just to buy the raw water to treat. Additionally, with just to get the water, they're increasing their capital costs to maintain their infrastructure and do ongoing repairs. So, we've been seeing in excess of $1 million per year, oh, So we've been seeing an excess of a million dollars per year, oh, at least the last five years. And the forecast going out looks to be the same, if not a little bit higher. Additionally, yes, we are seeing an increase in our chemicals to treat the water and the wastewater. We're seeing increases on the electrical to run the plants, to run the water distribution system. Additionally, on the debt service side, we continue to invest heavily into the infrastructure. We have ongoing rehabilitation replacements at all of the plants. We are replacing water and wastewater infrastructure within the neighborhoods. As Mr. Brady mentioned, the Signal Butte Plant came online in June of 2018. We now have planned an expansion which needs to be online by 2025 to meet that growth and demand in the southeast part of town. Additionally, we have the expansion going on on the Greenfield Water Reclamation Plant, which actually is scheduled to be done this year. So that contributes to all of those ongoing costs.
Okay, thank you. So, the acquisition of water costs, I know we're looking forward to the GRIK water coming online, but that's not going to be, Mr. Brady, what, for another five years or six years until we can build the infrastructure to take advantage of that?
Correct. That's about four to five years off. I believe we've got the alignment, or the preferred alignment chosen. There are some discussions, as you well know, coming up with the GRIK. And additionally, I think we've got some final discussions with the town of Gilbert where that pipeline actually goes into Gilbert.
Okay. Thank you. I just thought that was important that we make sure people understand that building water treatment plants, wastewater treatment plants, dealing with the increased cost of chemicals, dealing with the increased cost of the commodity costs for waters, those are all very real things that we need to put into this formula.
And Mayor, thank you for bringing this up. So when we look at the slide for water, the total expenses are a little over $19 million, but the revenue that's going to be generated by the 1.5% for water is only $6.7 million. And then when you look at wastewater, the expenses are about $10 million, 10.3 million, but the revenue on the one, on the increase, I forget what the percentage is, is still less than $3 million. So even though you see these expenses, we are not proposing to recover all of that with the rate increase because we have healthy fund balances, so we're only asking for the one and a half percent. And we'll, and if we can continue that through the years, we think it'll both bring that reserves down, but also develop the capacity to meet our obligations of expenses and revenues each year.
Thank you. I'm sorry, you were in the middle of jumping to a point when I derailed you there a second ago.
Nope, actually, I'm good. I'm going to turn the rest of the presentation over to Eric.
All right. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, in addition to the rate increases, the largely one and a half percent rate increases, we're also proposing to complete the final water residential tier realignment. This has been about a six-year journey of slowly moving the thresholds for those, on the residential side of those tiers down, in addition to eliminating the final water non-residential excess surcharge holiday. This has been a three-year journey now, slowly getting rid of February, January, and now December as a holiday from the excess water surcharge on the non-residential side. We've already gone over this.
I apologize. Can you remind me what the excess water surcharge is?
Absolutely, Mayor. The excess water surcharge is a surcharge on top of the usage charge that, where we take a look at the four months, the four winter months, so December, January, February, March, and then take the three highest use months and then average those, and that's your average, that's your winter water average. And then throughout the course of the year, if you use over that amount, you're charged a surcharge, and this is to induce conservation, to make sure that, you know, we're not, you know, overtaxing the system or using too much, you know, creating too many spikes in consumption.
Thank you.
Mayor, may I add to a question? So does that include your irrigation as far as the capacity on the tiers?
Mayor, Councilmember Duff, this is for your non-residential, so, excuse me, currently that it was for non-residential, residential is for your tiers, and so the non-residential does not have tiers. So this is only, the excess surcharge holiday was only for your non-residential accounts.
Okay, for residential surcharges, does that take into factor in irrigation water?
So, Mayor, Councilmember Duff, there is no excess surcharge for residential. That's where the city went to the tier structure. So with the tiers, your, your water usage goes into, starts at tier one, and then if you go above a certain amount, so the new amount would be 7,000 K gal, then you would jump into the next tier. And so that is where your, the tier adjustment and your tier alignment is for your residential.
So think of it as the base tier is what, again, like I said, what we, based on historical consumption and what we look across all accounts, we believe is the amount that people need within the four walls of their home, right, for their, I'm not sure what the right word is, but for kind of their life safety, just their, you know, everyday life inside your home. And then what happens is, with different sized lots and different types of outdoor usages, we kind of create these tiers that if you want to spend more, you know, if you want to have a winter yard or spend more, use more water outside, we then kind of have these ascending tiers where as you go through the amount of water you use outside for discretionary use, it'd be, that portion becomes more expensive to use. And so if you have a very large lot with a lot of landscaping, then that's going to cause you to pay the premium. And so that's kind of how we try to manage those tiers, if that makes sense.
Okay, I hate to beat this to death, but I noticed on like my bill and a lot of other residents, we have one line item for our irrigation, literally the irrigation that comes in through the canal system, and then we have another line item for our usage. So I don't know as far as the tier charge, is that is combining those two rates, those two usages, I mean.
Mayor, Councilmember Duff, no, the irrigation is unique. It's its own separate rate structure. So that line item is simply based on the irrigation rate, and so it has no impact as to what's occurring on your residential tiers for your potable water.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Heredia has a question.
Can you remind me, how do you base the tiers? Is it similar to what non-residential, as you say, the three, three months average? On the residential side, how do you tier, how do you set up the tiers for folks?
Well, the tiers have been, you know, this has been about a six-year process, and the tiers were forecast and were developed about six years ago, and we've been slowly making our way to where we wanted to be. I think it's a great story because when we forecast for a certain amount of consumption within those tiers, we're actually ending up right about where we said we would be about six years ago. That said, there's, people are using less water, so there's a little bit more people that are following, falling in that first tier. But we actually looked at consumption patterns of the different communities within the city. So we took a look at the different zip codes, and there's very distinct consumption patterns and where they top out or where the typical customer within those different communities would top out. So, for instance, you know, we want to take the, these rate, these tiers, the first tier to seven K gals, the next tier to 15 K gals, the next tier to 24 K gals, and then everything after that is charged the top rate or the premier rate. But these tiers have, were created based on consumption patterns of the consumers, and also, we took a look at how many consumers we need within each of those tiers and how much we need to charge them to then proportionally charge them for how much capacity within the system that we need to maintain for them. So, again, it's, this goes back to that other chart where we showed capacity, and so we calculated how many customers were going to end up within each tier and how much we need to charge and what was equitable to maintain capacity for those, for those customers.
And are, did you say if these tiers are adjusted every year, or are they pretty flat as far as the consumption that you've set out over the last several years?
Yeah, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmember Heredia, that's a, that's a great question. So these tiers will not, they're not going to fluctuate throughout, throughout the year. They will stay right where we are proposing them. So they will stay at seven K gals unless sometime in the future, we want to take a look at the tiers and look at another readjustment if behaviors change. But the tiers wants the, whatever council wishes, whatever we place them at, they will not move.
So Council, Mayor, Councilmember Heredia, the tier structure was part of the implementation plan of a five-year, five or six-year implementation plan when we were implementing the tiers. This was part of the, that implementation plan of lowering, of adjusting the tiers a little lower as we go. The tier structure is, for the residential, is to promote conservation for the tiers two, three, and four. And to kind of get back to the, between the tiers, the tier one, I just want to reiterate that tier one, as the city manager indicated, is for residential, is for necessary, basically to sustain life within your four walls. Tier two is discretionary, and with the commercial, the, the commercial is considered a discretionary. And with commercial and non-residential, it is, so what we're trying to do is with that is increase, adjust the non-residential rates up to that tier two. Currently, they are below that tier two of the residential. So that's where we're trying to adjust. The, the tier one residential is for sustaining life within the four walls for the residents, and then any, the tier two would be your discretionary spending, and that's where we're trying to adjust those non-commer, the non-residential up to that tier two.
Can I just make another point on the, on the tier concept, just because I, sometimes we're criticized for, again, this model that we have of the city being so invested in utilities and, and creating revenue from utilities, and people will say, well, that's a regressive way, you know, way to generate funds. You're inordinately burdening poor people, you know, because they, everyone has, has to rely on, on lives, you know, on water and some of these essential services. And to me, the tier program is an attempt to mitigate that criticism. People like me that need, and then incentive, you know, to conserve water and not just, you know, have my swimming pool and my winter lawns and all these things that, you know, are arguably things that I should think about, you know, that, it incentivizes me to use less water, but it also makes sure that, you know, the, the single parent living in a studio apartment, you know, is, is, that we're giving them the absolute best rate possible and not burdening poor people disproportionately to everybody else in the community. So, I endorse and I'm proud of the tier schedule that we've adopted, and I think it's important that we recognize it's, that we were doing a good job of doing that.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, well, then we'll move right along to the impact of these rate adjustments and rate realignments. First, we'll talk about water. Water, our typical residential customer, which would use about six K gals or 6,000 gallons. Again, this is another good story, you know, I feel is that, you know, this one and a half percent increase, your typical water customer would see just over a 50 cent increase a month in their, in their water bill. So at 57 cents a month, that's what your typical residential water customer would see as an increase to their water bill. Even on your, your commercial side, your typical general commercial, so not landscape, but general commercial, a one-inch line, they're going to be using about nine K gals. You know, they're only going to see an effective rate increase of 2.9% or about a buck fifty a month, even though the service charge is being proposed at, you know, 5%, you know, the effective increase because the usage charge is being proposed at one and a half percent on the non-residential side, you're, they're only going to see, you know, a buck fifty a month increase to their, to their water bill. So again, you know, I feel those, those are some, some good stories there. And then on the wastewater side as well, another good story is that, you know, your typical residential wastewater customer only going to see a 79 cent increase a month to their wastewater bill. And then on the, the commercial side, non-residential side, a buck eighty a month. So, you know, we feel like the, the rates have been structured to, you know, not impact, you know, those, those typical customers in a, in a underlying way. So with that.
Thank you. I'm sorry, before I move on, I believe Mr. Thompson has a question.
Thank you, Mayor, I did. Going back to, and this may be a little bit off topic, but going back to GRIK, as we, as we invest in the infrastructure to take GRIK to water, there's going to be days that their consumption rate isn't, is going to be, I guess, you know, there may be days that they don't take any consumption, and there may be days that they, you know, take a lot of consumption on the, on the gray water. Is there a way that we could invest in the gray water into the districts off of that pipeline so that when they're not using capacity, there's an opportunity for some of the large water users? For example, if you have a Microsoft or a Google that uses a closed-loop cooling system, they could use perhaps the gray water instead of treated water to run their plant and to keep everything cool. And likewise, we could use the gray water in our parks and so forth because it's, it's, you know, it's almost potable water, right? So, you know, we, I mean, it could be retreated and it would become potable, but, I mean, it's right there on the birds. But is there, is there an appetite to maybe invest in running the purple pipes and investing in gray water use throughout the city?
So, that's a great question, Councilmember Thompson. I don't, probably, but I don't know, we're kind of all looking at each other like, wow, this guy's asking a great question, but we don't have an answer to it right now. So I think we need to sit down and give it some thought and maybe sit down with you and kind of think this through. But sure, and maybe, in another time, we could probably have that conversation about what we're truly delivering to the Greenfield, or we're delivering to the GRIKs and, you know, the problem is, is you've got to have a certain level of certainty when you're delivering water on a consistent basis and, and how many users you could get that would want it maybe periodically or without little notice. So let, let us get back with you and we can have a conversation about that.
Great, thank you, Chris.
So Mayor, Council, that, any, if there's not any other questions for water, we will bring Solid Waste, Environmental Management, and Sustainability up here to talk about their recommended rate adjustments.
Scott Boucher, the Environmental Management Sustainability Director, here today to present the solid waste rates. So for residential, we are proposing no increase for the residential rate this year. With commercial front load, overall, it would be a three and a half percent increase on our commercial front load program, and I'll go into a little bit more detail here in a couple of slides on how that three and a half percent is applied. For the commercial roll-off rates, we're looking at an increase of approximately 1%. And then also with our bulk item collection, we're looking at increasing, that's a pay-as-you-throw type service where if you schedule that service, that's the only time that you pay for it. And so we're proposing an increase of $1.96, so that would go from $23.04 to $25. And then we do also charge a not-out fee for the bulk item collection. So what that means, if you have scheduled a bulk item collection and when we get to the site, there's the site, there's nothing there, we charge you a fee because we have driven out to that location with the intention of picking up that bulk item. We're looking at increasing that to what the cost would be for that first bulk item collection. The reason for this is, the bulk item is a very popular program that is booked many times that you'll have to wait. Now, we did add, over the last couple of years, we've added the service so that now it is available Monday through Thursday, but there are times when it is booked, and so you have to wait a couple of days for that service. So, we're hoping this will discourage folks from not putting out their stuff and making it available so that if somebody does have a bulk item collection, that we're able to service the folks that need that, as opposed to driving by properties that there's nothing out. And then we also have a household hazardous materials only fee that would be charged to the Leisure World residents who have come to us and asked for an ability to use the facility, and so this 41 cents would be charged over to there, and then they would be able to use the household hazardous materials facility. The next slide gets into some of the details associated with the front-load trash recommendations. So, we are proposing a $1.50 increase for all of the bin sizes that we have, so two, four, six, and eight-yard bins would each go up $1.50, increasing our out-of-zone fee from a dollar, by a $1.50, from $15 to $16.50. So, the city is split up into different zones to create efficiencies as we collect the material, and this out-of-zone fee is designed to try and make sure that as many customers as we can, we keep them in zone to create those densities and efficiencies on the front-load routes. We do give multi-day and multi-bin discounts, and so we're looking at increasing those by two percentage points. So, what it is, is if you have multiple bins on a property, we charge the full rate for the first bin, and then the second bin receives a discount, and so we're just reducing by two percentage points what that discount would be on the second bin. And then you'll see here that we have several fees that we are looking at either increasing or implementing. As we look, so the commercial front-load program does compete with the private sector. So, this is open competition. City of Mesa businesses have a choice of who they want for their solid waste services. As we've been looking at different ways of having our customers and what we can charge them, we've noticed with the privates that many of them have these types of fees, and what these types of fees, it's almost similar to the bulk program. So, you won't be charged with this fee unless we have to provide that specific service for it. But what it does do is it helps us keep our monthly rates then for our customers that, say, have one bin that goes once a week. It helps us keep their costs down by charging these fees to other customers that need us to provide specific services to them from time to time. Roll-off, so again, another competitive program that we run is our roll-off program, and we are looking at increasing the trash and green set fee by $2, so from $58 to $60. The per-ton charge would go up 20 cents to get us to $33.50. And then the green waste charge, we've been increasing this over the years because our green waste tipping fee is one of our higher tipping fees that we have, and so this would go up by $7.45 to $39.75. This is, I will note, that the amount of roll-off business that we have that is just green waste is pretty limited, so there's not a lot of customers that this will affect, but it is something where, right now, that fee that we're charging per ton is less than what we actually pay. So, we need to get that increased up so that we can at least recover our costs back on what we're paying for that. And then looking at some of these charges for blocked or overloaded or unserviceable roll-offs, that that would be increased by $25. And then also, similar to what I just talked about with the bulk program, we're looking at implementing a 24-hour cancellation charge. So, there are times when roll-off customers have a scheduled roll-off service, we pull up to the business and they tell us, oh, I don't want you to service that today, actually, could you come back in two days or three days? And our roll-off business has been going very well, and many times, we have a wish list, is what we call it, of folks that are looking for roll-off service, but we're not quite able to provide it, either because we don't have the bins, or we don't have enough trucks to be able to service everybody that day. So, along those same lines, this is to try and make sure that folks, if they need that service, they've got that scheduled service. If they don't need it, that they call and they cancel it ahead of time so we can let another paying customer take that spot that we have reserved for that day. With commercial recycling, we are proposing to eliminate the commercial commingled recycling program at this time. We just had a long discussion last week about recycling and the challenges that we have right now, and so this is a front-load program that you can treat a bin kind of like a blue barrel, but without us having an ability really to deliver this material to vendors at this point, we are proposing to eliminate that program. We do still have one vendor who is taking cardboard from us, and they're not charging us, so that United Fibers was the discussion that we had last week, the one recycling facility that is still operational right now that we have a contract with. They are taking our cardboard, our commercial cardboard material, as long as we meet some pretty stringent contamination standards that they have set. But because of those increased costs, you could see we're proposing increases to that commercial front-load cardboard program. And with that, that is what I have from the solid waste side.
Scott, can you, Mayor, just quick, Scott, can you explain, it was an interesting number, the 41 cents that were the household hazardous to Leisure World, can you explain how we came up with the 41 cents?
41 cents is the amount that we have for, so we have the green and clean fee that we charge our residential solid waste customers that pays for the NCU program, so the neighborhood cleanup program and the household hazardous materials program. And that is split, I believe the split is 41 cents for household hazardous materials and 43 cents for the NCU program. And so, this would just be the HHM portion of it. When we first opened, there were a lot of folks from Leisure World who wanted to utilize the facility, and we, they weren't paying that fee, so we weren't able to service them. And so, this is a compromise that we've tried to find with Leisure World.
Okay, a quick question, Scott. So, I did, I think generally what you're suggesting is not raising residential solid waste fees, and so the rate, the increases that you're proposing for commercial and bulk, I assume again that we remain competitive, you know, in that environment, and these aren't fees that'll price us out of the market. And then the next question I have is, obviously, last week's discussion, we talked about the future of the Blue Barrel program, and I, it might be good just to remind everyone that we are looking for ways to bring back, you know, to have a robust Blue Barrel program, and that in the future might, we might consider raising some fees in order to do that.
Yes, possibility. Yes, that is definitely a possibility, and as we come back to you with updates from our discussion last week, I imagine that there would be some sort of financial aspect to that where we'd be looking at what effect that would have on the residential solid waste rates.
And on the commercial side and bulk side, these rate increases would still put us commercially competitive with the private providers?
That is the balance that we try and have as much as we possibly can, and that's why we really looked at some of these fee-based, where we're going out and we're providing a service that does have a cost associated with it, and trying to have increases in that area, especially with like those not-outs, where we have a paying customer who is hoping to get that service that day, but then we have another customer who cancels. So, yeah, it is always a balance that we have because with the commercial program, they can choose other solid waste providers. So, we really have to find that balance between what is the rate we can charge to collect back on all of our costs that we have and provide them the service that they need.
Thank you.
All right, so Mayor, Council, the next is energy resources, and they will start off with talking about the electric side of the department.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Frank McCray with the City of Mesa's Energy Resources Department. We manage and operate the electric and gas utilities, and with me on my left is John Petroff, who's our senior fiscal analyst, and also in the audience is Tony Condorn, in case we get into any matters that I need his expertise on. So, one of the things we'd like to reiterate is, each time we get a chance to appear before the council, is our goals, our primary objectives are to keep our system safe, our system reliable, our service reliable, and also achieve the goal of being economic and efficient. So, you can see the principles here. These principles are often pretty difficult to fulfill and achieve at the same time, so there's often a balancing of these principles. So, that, we'll go to the next slide. Our rate structure is similar to the water system, both for electric and gas. We've got three primary components, that system service charge, which is a fixed amount each month, then we have consumption-based charges, and then we also have a fuel pass-through mechanism for both electric and gas, going on to the next slide. So, we benchmark our bills and our rates with Salt River Projects. So, this graph provides a comparison of our current monthly electric bills for our electric customers, as well as a comparison with the proposed rates and with SRP's current rates. So, you see, we compare pretty well. The small customer averages about 326 kilowatt-hours per month, and the proposal that we're making today would increase our bills, those customers' bills, by about 3.1%. The average customer consumption is 783 kilowatt-hours per month, and the proposal will increase their bills approximately 2%. And the large residential customer averages about 1,557 kilowatt-hours per month, and the proposal will increase their bills approximately 1.4%. The proposed adjustments are summarized in this slide, and we're also proposing a new service called standby service. So, next slide, please. So, here's a table that indicates what our current bills are and by those components, as well as what's proposed. The tier structure there, so in the summertime, the tier designation is 1,200 kilowatt-hours per month, so once a customer's consumption in the summer exceeds 1,200 kilowatt-hours, the next number of kilowatt-hours consumed would be at the tier-two rates. In the wintertime, that designation is 800 kilowatt-hours. So, the green bars that you saw on slide 22, those reflect the proposed changes indicated on this table. So, the increase in the system service charge is a dollar per month, the increase in tier one is a 1% increase in the summertime, and then in the wintertime, the increase is proposed for tiers one and two is a 5% increase. So, if you can break that down for the residential customer, that 2% increase is made above a 1.1% increase in the system service charge, and then the nine-tenths of a percent of that 2% is due to the increase in the usage charges. So, we'd like to show something that we've been pretty successful at over the last several years, and that's how we've managed our energy supply costs. And so, what this graph compares is our average residential customer bills with SRP over an extended period of time. So, in 1112, fiscal year 1112, that difference between our average residential customer and if it was served by SRP, it was $3.08 per month or about 3.1% less than SRP. In 1920, that difference was $15.34 per month or 16.8% less than SRP. So, we feel like we've done a really good job. We admire SRP as being a very high level of leadership in the electric utility industry, so we feel they're an excellent benchmark, and we can claim that we're pretty successful in keeping our costs and our rates low. So, the next slide is for the small commercial customers, so those statistics there, in 1112, the difference was $7.30 per month or 18.2% less than SRP, and in 1920, the difference grew to $10.86 per month and 26.1% less than SRP. So, as I talked about those principles indicated in slide 20, those are really, they really apply well when you've got a fairly standard customer with a common service requirements of our other customers, but our service area is beginning to be selected for the types of developments where the electric service that they are requesting is not common or standard, and thus, our electric utility rates and associated structures won't really allow those principles I talked about earlier to be fulfilled. So, in a couple of instances, there's two specific attributes to these developments that render the need for a different type of the service and associated rate, which is why we're proposing the standby rate. One of those attributes is they're going to install onsite generation, and it's planned to provide a significant share or all of the energy consumed within those developments, and/or we're going to invest significant amount of money to extend our infrastructure and install equipment to provide the services requested given the locations and size of the developments. So, under existing rates, the use of onsite generation minimizes the revenues from the development, which are necessary in order for us to recover the costs that we've invested in the infrastructure and equipment to serve them as they've requested. So, this slide is a comparison of the existing standard commercial rate, which most customers would be eligible for, and what we would apply to these new types of customers. So, the proposed standby rate resolves the issue by the bill and associated revenue being based on the electrical size of the infrastructure equipment installed to provide the service, rather than just on the amount of energy that they consume as provided by the utility. So, the needed revenues to recover the investment in this infrastructure equipment are essentially decoupled from whether the onsite generation provides the energy needs or whether the utility provides those energy needs. So, it's important to keep in mind, here's a simple schematic of an electrical system, including essentially the regional electrical transmission and generation system. So, when that customer's onsite generation ceases to operate and meet the needs of the customers or residents within a development, all parts of the electrical system that we have to either build and invest in and operate or acquire through third-party contracts, all parts of those, of the system are going to be used to serve the development and its customers. So, without this standby rate, the customer would not be absorbing any of the costs that we're going to incur to provide their services when their onsite generation isn't working. So, if there's no questions on the electric side, we can move to the gas side. And again, safety, reliability, and efficiency and economics are our primary goals. Here's the rate structure and the three common components. So, let's go to the next slide. So, similar to the slide for electric, we compare ourselves with Southwest Gas, and this graph provides a comparison of our currently monthly bills, that's shown in the blue, with bills based upon the proposed rates, which be the green bar, and then with Southwest Gas's current rates, which is the yellow bar. The small customer in this analysis averages about six terms per month, and the proposed increase will increase their bills by approximately 1.2%. The average customer uses about 22 terms per month, and their bills will increase by about 1.3%. And the large customer in this residential class is about 48 terms per month, and their bills will increase approximately 2.6%. In terms of comparison with Southwest Gas's bills, the small customer for us is about 15 and a half percent more than Southwest Gas. The average customer is 10.3% less than Southwest Gas. The large residential customer is about 30% less than Southwest Gas. Now, you see the anomaly there being the small residential customer for Mesa. That difference where Mesa has a higher bill for our small customers is due to a rate design and structure that was mandated by the Arizona Corporation Commission for Southwest Gas, where that component called the system service charge, they've mandated that Southwest Gas have a very low system service charge, and instead of recovering fixed costs through that system service charge, they recover it through the consumption-based charges. So, that's why there's anomaly compared to our rates and bills.
If you take the consumption and this rate, does, how do we compare favorably when you take all components of the rate?
Well, this compares all components.
Oh, this does?
So, this has all three components, and it's just that the difference in the system service charge is what really drives there to be that difference between our customers and if they were served by Southwest Gas for those small consumption-based customers. and ones, and if they were served by Southwest Gas, for those small consumption-based customers. But because their consumption is small, their bills are relatively small as well. So while it's a 15%, or, excuse me, what was the... While it's a 15% difference between Southwest Gas and our customers, it's a relatively small amount on a, dollar amount on a monthly basis. About $4 a month, something like that. Okay. So we're going to propose changes to the categories there, and we're also going to be proposing a new rate and service for gas economic development. So here's a table that compares our current rate structure and rates for residential with the proposed. And so you can see the increases there. Again, the green bars on Slide 32 reflect the proposed changes that are indicated in this slide. So the increase in the system service charge is 25% per month. There's a 10% increase in the tier-two rates that's reflected here. Now, the transition from when consumption is billed at tier-one versus tier-two is 25 terms per month. So thus, the small gas residential customer will typically only see a 25 cents per month, or $3 per year increase in their gas bills. The 1.3% increase that the average residential customer is expected to see can be broken into seven tenths of a percent attributable to the system service charge changes, and then six tenths of a percent due to the increase in the changes in the second-tier rates. So here's the bill comparison graph for commercial customers. And again, for current proposed, as well as Southwest Gas. The small commercial customer averages about 59 terms per month, and the proposal will increase bills by approximately 2.3%. The average customer consumption is 454 terms per month, and that proposal will increase bills by about one-half of a percent. And then for the large commercial customer, which averages 1,446 terms per month, the proposal will increase the bills by about 1.8%. So in comparison with Southwest Gas, our small commercial customer will be $61.23 per month, or about 6% less than Southwest Gas. The average will be about $140, $194 less than Southwest Gas, or 4%. And the large will be $415.96, or about 3% less than Southwest Gas. So on the commercial side, we don't have that anomaly that we face on the gas side. So here's the proposed adjustments for the commercial rates. You can see the changes. So the green bars again on the prior slide reflect the proposed changes that we show here in this slide. So the increase in system service charge is $2 per month. We're going to also propose to increase the tier level from tier-one to tier-two, from 1,200 terms per month to 1,500 terms per month. And so the proposed changes in the tier-two usage rates are 3%. By increasing the consumption level for when the tier-two rates apply, this part of the proposed rate changes really only packs the larger customers. There may be some months where that average customer may get into tier-two, but for the most part, there will be very little impact on the average customers or customers smaller than the larger customers from the tier-two rate changes. So in this proposal, the average commercial customer's bill will increase by only approximately one-half of 1%. And that would be attributable to the increase in the system service charges. So probably the most exciting part of the morning for me is to propose a gas economic development rate. We've prepared this in collaboration with the Economic Development Department as a result of having some inquiries through their office about large commercial and industrial manufacturing-type facilities, where, again, those principles that we've talked about earlier, it just wouldn't apply. The type of service that they're requesting and the circumstances under which we would be able to serve them in terms of investment and infrastructure don't apply. So we, it necessitates the need to come up with an alternative proposal. This is very similar to how we develop the electric economic development rates, which we've used on several occasions to retain and expand existing customers, as well as attract new customers. So there's the details of it. We also do have a system service charge that will be applied to the bills for these types of customers, as well as the pass-through recovery of our natural gas supply cost. And there's also some fairly strict criteria for enrollment and eligibility for the rate. So, and again, this is not just for new development, but for existing and customers that are looking to be expanded or possibly retained. We'd be open to those type of inquiries and trying to manage that such that we bring value to the gas side as we have on the electric side. Looking to the future, we're...
Frank, excuse me, Frank, before you go forward, this is, I have a question about the economic development rate. I, as I indicated earlier, I think it's important that we continue to try to attract large industrial users so that we can add them to our revenue for the utility system. So I, obviously, this is an attempt to do that, right? This is to attract more large industrial gas users. And I assume that the carrot we're dangling is better rates. So it, obviously, there's a net gain, right, by lowering, it's not intuitive that if you lower rates, you're going to make more money. But help me understand that that's the case, because we're going to have more of these large industrial users. And does, how does this square with the policy that we talked about earlier of trying to shift more of the burden to commercial off of residential?
Well, this is going to be a tool, a new tool in the economic development toolbox for Bill Jevgeniak and his team. And so the concept here is, most of the capital investment that we would invest to serve and extend infrastructure and equipment to serve this type of customer is going to be recovered in that first or second tier. So that will assure that we have cost recovery in a timely manner. It'll be lower rates than what our standard rates are, but it will still be negotiating the agreements to extend service to them such that we fully recover our costs within a timely manner. Growth will essentially for sure pay for itself in this instance. And then that third tier really causes, is the motivation, it provides them the incentive to expand and grow their operations and their plants. So it does meet all of those principles that we talked about earlier. And our standard rate structure would make it very difficult to attract those types of businesses and industries, and still allow us to recover our costs in a timely manner.
Okay, thank you.
So looking to the future, the smart cities, smart meter programs is probably no more valuable to the city than on the electric side. We're really looking forward to a lot of benefits from this program and the technology it provides. One of the things that I'm really hopeful that we can put together out of this is, one of the more successful conservation programs for electric low-income customers is prepaid bills. And our current metering system and billing system, et cetera, don't really facilitate that type of a service. So with these smart meters, we'll be able to provide that service, as well as things like time-of-use rates, which will allow us to really incent electrical vehicle charging, and especially incent electric vehicle owners to charge the vehicles when it's most beneficial and provides the most valuable to the electric utility system. So with that, I'd be happy to try and answer any questions.
Thank you, Frank. Counsel, do we have questions for Mr. McCray on gas or electric? All right. Thank you. Good presentation, Frank.
Thank you. So Mayor and Counsel, with that, if there's no more questions on any of the presentation, and with, if Counsel should give direction, this would be the schedule of the coming events. So on November 16th, an introduction of the utility rate ordinances would go in front of Counsel. And then on December 1st, Counsel would take action on those utility rate adjustments. And then the, those adjustments would be effective January 1.
Okay. Thank you, Brian. I know Mr. Freeman has a question.
Thank you, Mayor. Brian, this is going back to water, and I'm starting to go way back, I think to Slide 10. There was a complete final water residential tier realignment. So some of the constituents in my district have larger properties, and they choose to sprinkle or water their grass. Is there any realignment on the water residential tiers so that they're not paying higher water rates in that tier if they go over the first tier into the second tier? I know you only pay the difference between the two tiers. Was there any discussion on that?
I'm not sure. Sure. So I, come on up, Eric. So I think if you're suggesting, we're actually trying to lower the tiers so that if you're using, you potentially, if you're using a lot of water for outdoor usage, you may end up falling into one of those higher tiers. I guess we'd have to have specific numbers. I don't know where, what's happened, Eric. Go ahead.
Well, so Mayor, Vice Mayor, the, depending on those large lots, too, it also depends on if they have a dedicated landscape meter, which that can, that is metered, the rate is at a tier-two. It starts at a tier-two. So depending on if those large lots that you're talking about, so they'll have two meters. They'll have one that'll feed the residential area, and then one that'll feed the landscape. So the landscape, if they have that, is, starts at a tier-two rate. If they don't, then yes, the, once they reach that tier threshold of 7,000 K-gal, then the usage beyond that then would be charged at the tier-two.
Can I, can I tag on?
Yeah, that's just the usage above the seven.
Yes.
That is, Vice Mayor, that is correct.
Okay. And what's the cost, just for a landscape meter? I know this is kind of, if a person building a new home, they have a large lot, they put one of those in.
The cost to install a new landscape meter, I don't have that cost. It's, I think it's around, is it $1,500 for a new meter, for a landscape meter?
Sound about right. It's, it does cost to install a new landscape meter. However, once that's installed, the, the usage charge, it starts at that second tier, but it doesn't go above to the third or fourth tier. You're charged at that second-tier rate. So you could use, you know, 10,000 K-gals, and you would still be charged at that, that second-tier rate. So for those heavy users who are using a lot of water outside, it would make sense for them to install a landscape meter to administer that discretionary water to their yards.
Okay. And that obviously is separate from the residential meter as well. So you have two meters on your property.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmember Freeman, that is correct.
Okay. Thank you. I'm done.
Again, I'd like to learn more about the landscape meter, because it seems, again, I'm not quite getting it. You know, for example, I live in, I'm one of the people Mr. Freeman described. I live in his district. I've got a large grass lawn front and back, and I swallow hard every time I get my water bill from the city of Mesa. And so I think if I locked in, you know, my, and a lot of that is going on my grass. And so if I paid $1,500 to get that, that tier-two meter, is that, number one, should the city be incentivizing me to spray water, you know, on my grass? Or, and then is there likely going to be a net savings to me if I do, at some point, do that meter? I, I just, I think there's probably a lot of people like me, that, so I, at some point, I'd like to, maybe you can just tell us where we go to read about this and learn more about it.
Well, it's Page W3 of our utility rate book, which I'm looking at right now, or W2, I should say, includes our residential landscape water service. You can, it's laid out there, the different meter sizes, three-quarter to three-inch landscape meter, charged at that 479 rate, which is that discretionary rate. That's, that's about the extent that I can, I can provide you right now, Mayor.
Mayor, council members, I also want to caution that the 1,500 isn't an all-inclusive number. There is a charge for the meter. There would be a charge for us to connect into wherever the pipe is running within the street. And then the resident or the homeowner would then have to pay a private plumber to replumb on the property. So let's be careful that we don't say 1,500 is kind of that flat number.
But Mayor, your question really is, at that some point after you get past all that initial cost, what you hear is that then you're kind of a big water user, and you're, you can just be paying water at that tier-two. You're not concerned about going into those higher tiers. And I think it's just a balance, Mayor. We can certainly revisit that, but it is recognizing that there are individuals in the city with some very significant properties, outdoor water. And I think that was, at the time, why we were asked to give that option. But certainly, we could revisit that in the future. I don't know how many of these separate meters we have throughout the city.
Right now, we have about 100 customers for the landscape.
So it's not a lot, Mayor. It's 100. So I know, I think individually, people would have to adjust and think what that looks like. But we could certainly revisit that in the future, Mayor, about landscaping and outdoor water usage and how we capture that.
Yeah, I think it would be nice if we just had a paragraph or two, you know, that people like me could read and ponder on whether or not that's to our advantage to do this or not. So I'd encourage that. Councilmember Duff?
Along those lines and questioning about having a landscaping meter, wouldn't you additionally incur a service charge for having that second meter every month, whatever it is, $20, $30, or something like that?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmember Duff, that is correct. You would receive a separate service charge for every meter that you have, whether it be general, which we consider your indoor use, and then a landscape meter as well. So you'd be charged for both meters.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Brady, does that conclude the presentation?
Yes. Thanks, Mayor and Counsel. We know each year, this is a long presentation. We appreciate your patience. And there's a lot of work that goes into this over several months to bring you these rates. We've tried very hard to keep them affordable. And each year, we'll evaluate and see where we stand as far as the demand on the system. But thank you for your patience, and we'll move forward with the schedule that's been presented to you. So thank you very much.
Well, I have some thoughts, and I don't know if the other council members do as well. But it was a great presentation, and I do understand the amount of work that went into this. And I do appreciate there was a, that the policy of helping our ratepayers, you know, was evident. And the fact that staff is not oblivious to that being important was very evident. So my compliments. However, I do think that, so I think you're making the right recommendations. But I think that the duty of our council is, you know, to against that policy. And we are in unusual times. This, you know, the COVID situation and the economic downturn associated with that is literally an emergency situation. And, you know, we've taken steps this year that we never imagined that we would because of the situation that we're facing. And I'm proud of the way our city government is weathering the storm. I think we are weathering this downturn better than individuals in our community. And I, but it does seem a little inconsistent to me that while we are launching utility assistance programs and have, you know, very legitimate and sincere concern for those in our community that are struggling to pay their utility bills, especially now, that we're having this conversation about raising utility rates. So the other thing that I'm, that I keep not forgetting is that due to good management, we're in a very enviable position right now. We have a 31.6% balance in our, in our fund. That's great. And the other thing that I'd like to just remind us all about is that when we, when we take action on rates, we can actually be very nimble. And the three or four alternatives that have been presented to us, we can go down one path, and, you know, 60 or 90 days later, switch to another one. So it's not, we're not painting ourselves in a corner by doing something, you know, this month or this year that won't allow us to adjust when the emergency situation that we're in now writes itself. So like I said, for that reason, I understand, and staff has proposed some very modest... I said, for that reason, I understand, and staff has proposed some very modest increases. And I appreciate that. But I, my, my preference would be to do something that would be more of a combination of the, the drawdown model that was projected, that was recommended as well as the recommended. In other words, I, I'm okay with going forward with some of the commercial increases that are in the, the recommended staff proposal. But given the unusual situation we're in now, I'd like to hold the line on residential rates. Now, there are some other things that were proposed that I think are important to go forward with. The standby rate on the electric utility that, so that developments like the one we approved earlier today, the Echo Mesa program. I mean, we don't need to freeze all, all things that we're doing. We need to make allowances for things like that to go forward. So I do, I wouldn't support the standby rate. Also, the gas economic development rate that we talked about a moment ago. Again, I think it's a, it's good for us to go forward with some of those types of changes. But I'm anxious to hear the thoughts of some of the other council members. But again, I just, the two things that I can't let go of is the fact that we've got a great balance fund right now, a 31.6 balance. We are in an emergency situation right now and that we can be very nimble in adopting maybe staff's recommendations further down the road when, when we're not talking about having utility assistance programs. Counsel, any thoughts on that? Mr. Luna.
Thank you, Mayors. I also want to thank staff for that presentation. I know it's quite arduous and this is my second time around, so I've heard it twice. But I'm really interested to hear what the public has to say about these, these rate increases. I know some of them are minimal, but we are going through pandemic and we know there's a lot of individuals that are having some challenges. So I'm hoping that we're going to get more public response relative to the small increases. But I'm also cognizant that we don't want, we want to be able to do this measuredly. And as we go through time, we don't want to be saddled with a huge, huge increase within the coming years, which could be really detrimental to our residents and our, and our commercial customers. So we do have to take a measured approach as we move forward and move forward. And so I'm anxious to hear what the public has to, has to say relative to the residential increases as well as the commercial increases. I know I've had some people reach out to me about some of those. So I look forward to when we put this, when we have our meeting, a public meeting, and hopefully we'll get some input from the public related to some of these potential increases. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Luna. I agree 100% with you. My guess, my question is that as the schedule that was put up on our screen a moment ago indicates, at some point, we, in order for us to raise utility rates, we have to give a, I think it's either a 60 or 90 day notice, you know, put it on the agenda. And so the question is, what do we want to put on the agenda? Do we want to put staff's recommendation on the agenda and then, you know, have a public hearing on that and, and either then vote up or down on that? Or do we want to, and if we vote it down, then that means, you know, we'd have to renotice whatever it is we want to go forward with. And it was another 60 or 90 days before that we can implement it.
So Mayor, quickly, we've already had to do the notice. That's why we're here where we are today. So that notice has already been out and we've already given the notice based on the recommendation, the one and a half percent and the three, three and a half percent. So are all the rates you see on, under slide?
Seven.
Seven. So that's already been noticed. So that's what is expected to be on the agenda. Now, council, certainly as you're discussing, has a discretion. You can't go above that, but you can certainly go below that. And I think as we talk with audit and finance, every time we would make an adjustment, if we defer making an increase, it does push out a rate, a higher rate increase in the future years. And I think that was, that was the discussion that we need to have is, so how many years do we go without a rate increase? And if it's just one year, then how much do we have to increase the rates in the future to make up for that? And so I think we, we're willing to prepare those scenarios for the council to consider. If you did a deferral this year, what does that, what impact does that put on future years as far as higher rates than what we're showing on slide seven?
Thank you for that correction, Mr. Brady. So we don't need to renotice it. As long as we adopt what staff's recommendation is or something less than that, that the schedule that's been posted works. So thank you, Mr. Brady. I saw some other hands. Mr. Freeman.
Thanks, Mayor. I don't want to be caught in this scenario like our neighboring community of a 12% utility increase and having to spread to, to 6% increases over two following years. I, I would value, obviously value our public's input like Mr. Luna has talked about. But I think a small rate increase is inevitable because we've got to cover our infrastructure costs to provide the services we do today. And I don't see any other way to do it. I mean, we can zero out on the water component, I agree. But the rest of it, you know, there's costs associated for us to do business and to keep our reserve fund balanced. Yes, let's draw it down. I'm okay with that. But to spread out the rate increases is, is something that we need to look at for this five-year forecast. So thank you very much. I'll end with that.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Mr. Arretia.
Yeah, I think my comments on, on, I think water rates, based on what's happening right now around the pandemic and just rates there, if we can look at how on the residential side, we can either keep it at, keep, keep it at either zero or inflationary rates or a bit lower than inflationary rates on the, on the water side for residential, I would be, I would feel much better on the other rates. I think, you know, looking at what was proposed, I think those make sense as far as the balance through. And I think as we look at, you know, next year's rates, you know, as we, as we discuss this every year, that's where we can continue to monitor and balance these, these rates accordingly. But I, I would suggest on the water side for residential to look at either lowering those, those rates or, or keep it below inflationary or at inflationary rates for, for our residents.
Well, right now, the, the proposal is a one and a half percent rate increase for residential water, which I suspect is below, I mean, it's certain, that's below the cost of living allowance adjustment, I would guess. Is that, is that, would you agree with that, Mr. Brady?
Yeah, I think you're correct, Mayor. And just a reminder, that one and a half percent increase for a typical residential user is about 57 cents more per month. So that's, that's the magnitude of that. I mean, we could certainly look at, I mean, I think inflation, I don't know what the latest numbers are. I guess it depends on what your basket of goods looks like. But, you know, I think groceries have gone up quite a bit. But I don't know if it's 2% or 2 and 1/2%. Would you have an idea, Brian, what's numbers we're looking at?
Yes, Mayor, Council, it is about, it's about 1.75% right now. We use the Western municipal.
Oh, okay. So it's a little, it's a little higher than the one and a half. I mean, we could look at shaving a half percent off, get it down to 1%. Again, it's 57 cents more per month per account for the average. So that may bring that number down by a third. So those are options we can look at as we move forward and bring those to council and then talk about what that impact is in the out years. Because we are drawing, even with the one, one and a half percent, you can see on slide, going back to slide seven, you can see on that total net sources and uses line in that first column, we are drawing the fund balance down. We drew, drawing it down 5.5 this year and 11 million dollars next year. So it's, we are making a significant drawdown on the fund balance. But we can, we'll have, we prepared to go either way. The one and a half percent, we could look at a 1% and show you what the impact is in the out years. If you did no increase in the water residential, what that would be further out into the future. Remember, water residential is by far the biggest revenue generator of all the utilities, just because of the nature of everybody uses water and it's mostly residential.
Yeah, I know Councilmember Duff has a question, but before that, just for my, my own purposes, I, I would ask staff to please run that chart. And again, I'd like to see a combination of the drawdown and the recommended. I understand that the recommended is really a very, very modest increase. We're talking about a couple, you know, 20 cents, you know, per month for some of our water customers. So I respect that it's a very restrained recommendation from staff. But I would, I would like to see that chart where we do the, the drawdown scenario and go ahead and do the commercial increases, but that we, we freeze residential increases. And I'd just like to see what the impact of that is. Councilmember Duff.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. One point I'd like to bring up is many of our commercial accounts, many of our businesses are suffering right now as well. And we have a 5% across. So I agree with, when we went through the audit and finance and I was very concerned about, you know, residential as well, but the compounded meaning later could be, you know, hard to swallow. And at one and a half percent, it felt like that that for residential was, you know, you know, a minimal amount and maintained the balance, you know, that we needed to, you know, for the next five years, that we could kind of keep an even pace and meet the demand of our extra infrastructure. We've seen one of the driest years yet. And, and our commercial rates, I think if we were going to soften our residential, and I know on the commercial, it's hard to separate and say those that are like in the restaurants and things like that, that are suffering greatly, how would you even begin to, you know, separate that? It would be impossible. So I, in audit and finance, we decided just having that even flow as much as possible. But if we wanted to soften for residential, could we consider not changing the tiers on the water rate? And why I said that, I just looked up a home that I'm renting and it's one person with no grass front or back, but does have some plants. And the usage last month was 8,000 gallons. So that would kick it in based on the new tiered amount into the second tier. And that's just one person. Now, yeah, you can say, don't water any plants, but still, one person, you're getting 7,000, I don't think is really looking at a household. So would we want, maybe want to defer the tiers? Because I think most households would go into the second tier and not change that instead of looking at the rate, the one and a half percent.
Councilmember Duff, yeah, those are great points. I think the first thing we want to do is come out and meet with your tenant because we're all looking at each other thinking, that's a lot of water for a single person in, in a household. Because that 7,000 is almost like a universal, across all utility systems kind of standard. So we would want to, that's a good, I mean, it's a great, great point, but I think you raised more of a concern about, we're worried about the water consumption of that one home that's over 7,000, frankly.
Perhaps there's a leak, so.
Yeah. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmember Duff, and getting back to that point as well, when we forecast, we're actually looking at, you know, new, new builds, you know, in Eastmark, you know, new, new users coming in at, you know, five and a half K gals a month is what we forecast for and is what we're seeing. So, you know, we definitely would like to get out there and take a look. And there might be a leak and something that we can do to suggest conservation methods if anything else.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you. Counsel, other, other comments before we proceed. So again, the way this is agendized is to provide direction. And right now, the, we, what's, what's going forward is what we gave notice to a month ago, the calendar is in front of us with, this will come up for a public hearing in December. Again, speaking for myself individually, I'm, I can see myself possibly making a motion at that December hearing for something slightly less, you know. But, but I am anxious to look at the, the chart that, that I just asked staff to prepare. But again, and my rationale for that would be, again, while we have a large fund balance, while we're in an emergency scenario, while we're committing a lot of money to utility assistance, it just seems like it's not consistent for us to, to raise utility rates when, when we're in a, when we're declaring an emergency with regard to funding, or trying to help our customers with utility bills. But I look forward to having, you know, seeing what the numbers are and we can have that discussion in December. Anybody want to add anything more to that? Okay. Thank you very much. And this was a great discussion. I appreciate, again, staff putting out a lot of effort into this and their obvious sensitivity to the economic situation of our city. The next item on our agenda is item two, that's to acknowledge receipt of committee minutes. Is there a motion to that effect? Thank you, Mr. Luna, seconded by Mr. Freeman. We'll do a roll call vote. Vice Mayor Freeman, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Whitaker. Mr. Whitaker, I think you need to unmute your microphone. Okay, we'll come back to Mr. Whitaker. Mr. Arretia.
Aye.
Ms. Duff.
Aye.
Thank you, Councilmember Luna.
Aye.
Councilmember Thompson.
Aye.
I vote aye as well. Mr. Whitaker, how do you vote? Okay, that motion passes with six ayes and Mr. Whitaker not voting. Item three is the current event summary and reports on meetings and conferences attended. Counsel, what can you, what would you like to share with us? Councilmember Duff, and then Mr. Luna.
Yeah. I want to start by recognizing the Mesa Office of Economic Development for receiving six international excellence in economic development awards and at international, and in international reaccreditation. So the work that they're doing in economic development, especially during the pandemic, has been tremendous and as, at the same time, attracting new businesses that are providing good jobs for. I appreciate the work that they do and want to commend them for their work. Yesterday, along with you, Mayor, and Councilmember Thompson, and I know others, we're at the Phoenix East Valley State Persons Event with Congressional Representatives Greg Stanton and Andy Biggs on moving Arizona forward as good information on our economy and our policy. This afternoon, I will be hosting a community conversation with Vice Mayor Freeman and the Director Boucher on our recycling program and having the discussion with our residents. The, there is a notice on Facebook on several pages and registration is required in advance. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Luna.
Sorry, Mayor. Hold on. Sorry, Mayor. Yes, I have some announcements. It's okay, Mayor. This Saturday, the Mesa Provincial Alliance and the City Mesa Police Department will host a Halloween themed drive-in, threw drug takeback event. It'll be at Gene Autry Park from 8:00 AM until 1:00 PM. The other, so please put on your costumes and stop by to, to safely dispose any old medication. So if you have any old medication, you want to get rid of it safely, please bring it by. Again, it's at Gene Autry Park from 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM. It's a safe environment and we'll also have treats for the kids and educational packets. Also this Saturday, the Mesa Arts Center will host Dia de los Cortos Virtual Festival from noon to 3:00 PM. The festival, the festival will have live streamed on Mesa Channel 11 and on Mesa Arts Center website. This free virtual festival will be hosted by Telemundo Arizona and anchored by Paola Morales, Telemundo anchor. And it will feature performances by Luz de la Luna, which means Light of the Moon, and local favorite Mariachi Pasión, along with this special video presentations from, well, world renowned Ballet Fóclórico de México, Amelia Hernandez. So it should be a great event. And then, hold on for a second. And then this, on, on Saturday, on Halloween, the Mesa Public Library will be hosting its Halloween Boo. the Mesa Public Library will be hosting its Halloween Boo Parade from two PM to three PM at all three locations, including the Red Mountain Branch. This, this year, your car is included in the fun. Show up in your favorite costume, bring a treat bag, and maybe even decorate your car. We will have several stops to drive in to our parking lot with special treats at each stop. Each car will have a family pack of books for kids, needs, for kids to read. All treats and books will be supplied as long as you come over dressed up and we want you guys to join the event. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Luna. Council, other comments? Mr. Freeman.
Thank you, Mayor. You and I have our cemetery tour this Saturday from eight to noon, I'm sorry, eight to ten AM, kind of early at the cemetery. So I look forward to working with you on that. Councilmember Thompson and I, we had a virtual meeting with the Chamber about growth in the city of Mesa and talked about question one and the importance of that, but yet talked about all the things happening in our districts. And then I did a Lunch Mob virtual shout-out with the Chamber on Tuesday of this week. So been busy as well, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Council, any other comments? Mr. Brady, under a future, I hesitate to mention this, but I, because you're going to talk about future meetings as well, but I have been informed, just relevant to the drive-by shooting on Friday, that our police department will be having a community meeting next Wednesday at the Fiesta Station at six PM. I know there's a lot of folks, Mr. Reddy has been working very closely with a lot of the residents in that area that, that might have a particular interest in getting an update from the police department. So for those who are, fall into that category, that would be a good meeting for you to attend to get updated on this very important investigation in our community. Mr. Brady.
Yes, Mayor, just, just a reminder, we'll be reconvening again a week from today on the twenty-ninth for a study session. Thank you.
Very much, that concludes the items on our agenda for this meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn? Thank you, Mr. Freeman, seconded by Mr. Luna. We'll do a voice vote, so please unmute your microphones. All in favor of adjournment, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Thank you, any votes? Thank you. We are adjourned.